Good morning, this is Knox County Commissioners, April fifteenth, two thousand twenty-five. Our regular session for today and we have our report from Knox County Water and Sewer and Jeff, you're gonna introduce yourself to those people who are watching and then give us your report.
Okay, Jeff Pickrow, I'm the Director of the Water and Wastewater for Knox County. I think I've said before that most of our area that we services is out around the Apple Valley Lake area. We do have some some satellite areas, but most of our responsibility is around the lake. Jason, do you have my?
Oh, yeah.
Well, I guess, okay, all right. It doesn't matter, because I've got, I was gonna say, I got the list if they wanted to follow through on.
So it'll be a split screen, Andrew, so people can see it.
Okay, so just a color coordinate, Penny and I went over this earlier and she got it right. The green is sewer, the blue is is water, that is internationally known. If you see oops calls or something and see marks out there, if you see a green mark, it's you know sewer there and blue, so that's how we coordinate on our our schedule for the guys and stuff too, so. I'm gonna kind of hodgepodge around because I did not go down in order when I wrote my list, so. We've talked about the the booster at for water. Number two booster, we finally got the VFD done last week. That has been like a nine month ongoing thing that we've only had two boosters there. We now have three, so we have a lot of redundancy up there in case something happens to one of them. We can still fill the backwater tank and ride all the water to Apple Valley, so we're glad we finally got that done. We talked about CCTV, that's our that's our camera that we bought, purchased a couple years ago with some ARPA money that we're going out and and camering sewer lines. One of the things that we had to do, we had the project at PVA and there was some installation problems there originally. They fixed them. We went back in and camera that last week to make sure that that line is still adequate and it is, so we'll be able to sign off on that. They had a a one-year warranty, so we'll be able to get back with them and let them know that that line still does look good, so we got that part done. While they were out there, we have some I and I inflow and infiltration lines that are leaking, leaking water in. We probably have also some some sump pumps and stuff out there. The guys were able to get the majority of that collection system camered in the last two weeks. You'll see that it's complete on there somewhere.
And we're still talking PVA.
Still talking PVA, yeah, correct. So we've identified some areas that we're gonna have to go in and do some some point repair. Probably just excavate, cut the line. There's a lot of roots in there. They found one big stretch that there was a lot of roots that they weren't able to get through, so we're gonna actually have to go in with the with the, you know, our machine that everything but the kitchen sink bill as as you go back when we bought our our Vector truck, Vector jetter truck and go in and clean those lines and then be able to go in and camera and kind of try to identify those areas, but we we worked on that, so we can kind of chuck that off the list that we know we've identified the problems. Now we just need to go in and get those corrected.
So the residents out there, Pleasant, uh, few acres, uh, they have their own wells.
They have their own wells, right, but but they, no public water, but yeah, just on the on the sewer, so correct. We did this year, as I I'd stated, changing all of our oil and all of our generators and stuff. We have all those standby generators and all of our pump stations. It's something that we used to farm out. We geared up and we have some guys that are more than capable of doing that, so we did it all and they just got that completed. I don't know, it was like a week or two ago that they got those all, they got those all done. It was twenty, I think it was twenty-six generators that we ended up having to change a while when quite a bit of oil and quite a bit of work, but they did a really good job. We had a little plant modification after we were done at PVA. I'm jumping back to PVA, but that we needed to redirect a couple lines and so the guys got that done last week. We needed to core some concrete and they redid some piping and stuff out there to to help with operations. Just something that we didn't really know when we were designing and kind of learn as you go kind of thing, so got that finished. Uh, something new that's on the list, um, I think it's down there at the bottom is we've had a generator for Centerburg Pump Station for three and a half, four years. We have it on the docket next Tuesday and Wednesday. It's getting installed. We have some outside contractor help electrical work that'll be helping us and our guys will be setting it, digging the lines and we'll be doing bypass pumping and everything because we'll have the power off for a couple of days over there, so we'll have a bypass pump, the bypass pump that we bought two or three years ago that we've used on all these pump station upgrades, so um, we'll be using that over there, so it will be running periodically, so the customers will probably hear that. There's nobody right directly beside the pump station, but it will be kicking on and off, you know, as the as the level rises, but it's the only way to keep the sewer flowing while while the power's off, so.
Yeah, good. Help me out, Jeff. Most of your customers are in the Apple Valley region?
Yeah, Apple Valley, Millwood, yes.
I see Centerburg and Northridge up there, if I'm not mistaken.
Northridge is Apple Valley.
Northridge is still Apple Valley, it's still part of, yeah, there's there's different subdivisions within within Apple Valley.
Okay.
Don't ask me how many because I can't route them off. I think there are like eight or nine different subdivisions in there throughout throughout Apple Valley, so. Centerburg is Centerburg. Over at Centerburg, you know, the little, we we had talked about the last time, the little hamlet that we have over there with like twenty-some customers, was that what it was, thirty-four? We counted that, yes.
Thank you.
So that's that that small pump station over there that we actually pump our sewage then to to the village of Centerburg, that, so. Um, can I say, we've been sitting there with that generator for three and a half years. We just decided it's not doing us much good here. I know Jason's got uh, a meeting.
Yeah, I mean.
So hopefully we'll, yeah, so hopefully we'll, hopefully we'll be moving along with that and so we thought we're gonna go ahead and and get that done, so we don't have to worry about it since it is our still our responsibility to take care of it.
Thank you.
We were talking about CCTVing. We've got about half of the collection lines done at Harborview. Harborview is back by the marina. I think they call Grand Valley, I think that's Grand Valley, some Graham View, yeah, Grand Valley View subdivision. I they they're all kind of run together because we don't call the pump station than that, but that is the pump station that we have the most problems with when we have all the rain that we had, you know, the last two weeks. Um, we we did have, we did have some problems there, was noted to the EPA and we've responded back and they're they're inquiring also and and they were satisfied with what we were doing, but we weren't alone in the in Ohio with all the rain. So but we are concentrating on that. We know that that is that is our biggest problem, so they've got about half of it done. We found seven or eight areas that we need to repair. We have ordered parts and pieces that we're going to repair, try to do it with non-digging and use the camera that we purchased. It has the ability to to go in and do some point repairs, so we're going to, we're gonna try that. It's gonna try that out too. We have, we talked about it the last time, cleaning lot lines. We do have that whole subdivision is is now mowed. We have a mower on the front of our skid steer and we go through and clean the lot lines so we can find the fan hole so those guys can go in and camera. That also helps with development when they're starting. They can be able to find the sewer lines and all that, so that subdivision is complete. We still have a lot more to go, but we're we're getting there. Uh, the only other thing I have is Northridge Pump Station. We are now complete as of today. Um, they they had some great stuff to do. We have a little bit of grading seating and stone, but we will be completely done with that. That was a complete rehab of that pump station, new pumps, valves, control valves, suction lines, all of that stuff, so anyway, that is finished. I don't think there's anything else unless you guys got.
Jeff, was that water thing that alert went out last night, county?
Yeah, unfortunately, we're, okay, so, so I'm gonna request to have a a a meeting with the the fire chief because that did not go well. Um, we were not notified. Obviously, it's our water system, obviously. Me is, as a licensed holder, is responsible for that system and we didn't know what was taking place. We got.
Put the alert out.
I did, because we are notified when we start having tank level problems and it dropped the tank like a rock. And so Troy and I both came in, just so happens he lives in the back of the valley and happened to see a fire truck sucking off the hydrant, okay, or we would have been chasing a break because we thought we had a major break. It's it's indicative, the 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 graph was indicative of having a water break, okay, and we were we were that close to calling all the guys in too, which would have created, you know, more overtime and more cost for us that we weren't doing anything, so Troy talked to them. They were actually pulling off of two different hydrants, which was a problem. They were pouring more water than we could produce out of the tank and it stirred everybody's water up, so I felt that as opposed to us continuing to get calls from all the customers because they were calling, we have the 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 twenty-four hour service, so if they call the office, they can push to and it'll go directly to somebody that's on call uh, to try to avoid all that, plus they were calling the Sheriff's Department, so we were getting calls from dispatch that we decided to go ahead and put that out. There was ramifications because I guess, you know, social media, how it is, they were all griping complaining because the only way for them to clean up their water is to run their run their spigots, I mean, after the water settles down, so I mean, there is no other thing, so that's our advice and I didn't cause it. We weren't flushing the lines, so we need to have a discussion with with the fire department. I mean, obviously, you know, fire service is important, but um, quality of water to our customers is also important, so um, I I I have a another method that maybe they can get some water that maybe we can stop from that.
The lake.
It had they not been pulling off of two different hydrants and they were not supposed to, and I think there was just some um, maybe ball drop there, let's put it that way, use light information that, so even after we notified them, they still went back and were still pulling off of the second hydrant while this guy's sitting here with the truck supposedly, so they were all supposed to be filled from one place and I think maybe just say rogue that they found another hydrant to get water quickly and, you know, they were, they have a purpose and so they have their tunnel vision and don't understand what could possibly take place and busting our lines doesn't have any of us have any water then, so, and that's something we want to, we definitely want to avoid, so. Um, I will be requesting to have a meeting and we'll we'll kind of go through things and hopefully we can come to a little better um, solution the next time that that happens, so, not if, but when it does, so, yeah, so anyway.
But it answers that question.
Answers that question?
We were all wondering.
Penny, was I quick enough?
You're off the time, yeah.
I'm off it, so, all right.
Penny, we need to sign this resolution today, is that for the dispatcher?
Yes, we passed it last week and it's just now official that needs signatures to present to them.
This is the dispatcher of the year, so she'll be bringing him up here at ten thirty, so I'm ready to present.
Um, we need to get a coin too, then we.
So we'll move on, Commissioner, uh, approve the advertisement sheet of social media outlets and county website, the bids for the Knox County Engineers Office, Howard Danville Road Bridge Project.
And and the reason why we're able to do that now is because of change in legislation before required us to put it in the Mount Vernon newspaper.
This is the first one under the new system, one of the things that we're allowed to do this way, yes.
I make a motion.
Okay, and those in favor say aye.
Okay, approve of, to proceed with the proposed renewal levy for tax for the purposes of providing revenue outside the ten mil and this is for the mental health and recovery for licking in Knox Counties. And this is under the Ohio Vice Code, so we did the first part the other day and now Penny has this for the second part and then she'll submit this. Eventually it'll get over to the Board of Elections for the ballot issue.
And we we were wondering about the language and the prosecutor's office did report back to us that the the language we're using as a renewal levy is the correct language for this.
I saw that email.
So I'll take motion.
I motion through.
I second it.
Those favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, and then we have an independent contractor agreement for IT services with the Village of Frederictown. We're gonna have a few of these today, but I had Kyle kind of line all these up. These are just renewals for services that we're providing to a few of the villages, so this is for Frederictown and we bill uh, IT services at a hundred dollars an hour as needed and their their needs are very limited and it saves them money. Um, then we can provide that service to them, so.
I saw the seventy-one dollars and change for software. Is that an additional, Jason?
Yeah, that's for their, they have to get their own uh, software and all those. We just providing the IT support. So they pay for their own equipment and software and they, Kyle has them pay for the, it's the help ticket software, right, Andrew, is what it is, is, yeah, that they get on our that way, our ticketing system, so they, when they put a ticket in, they're on our system that it comes back and they can see it, so we do require them to pay for that.
A motion to approve.
Second.
Those favor say aye.
Aye.
And then we have another independent contractor agreement for IT services with the Village of Danville. Motion to approve.
Second it.
Those favor say aye.
And then the third one is for in in a contractor agreement for IT services and this one is with Frederictown Community Joint Ambulance Fire, uh, Frederic County MS, so they have their own agreement outside of the Frederic Town Village and Police.
Motion to approve.
Okay.
Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Then we have a contractor agreement with Department of Job and Family Services and Jeanette Ronnie for Ohio League's Job Summer Youth Safety Program. This is the third one or fourth one we've had so far. I think there's more to come, right, Penny?
Yes.
So the motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Those favor say aye.
That one requires all three signatures. And then we have the approval of the Knox County Department of Job and Family Services for ten prevention, the ten, the contingency plan, and this is, uh, that we were approval, it's got some this down six to there to go.
Yeah, before we approve that, I'd like to read some of the stuff from there, so that some of the people understands. Um, the Knox County Job and Family Services Prevention, Retention and Continuancy Plan. I was looking at some of the items that I thought would be interesting for the people that see that says the Prevention, Retention and Continuancy Program in Knox County is designed to aid families with children to help them overcome immediate barriers that prevent achievement of self-sufficiency and personal responsibility. Um, PRC assistance is nonrecurrent, short-term assistance that addresses crisis type situations which do not exceed four-month periods. Um, the PRC nonrecurrent benefits in our services, they incorporate more than one payment a year. And then it talks about the service's prevention. Benefits services are provided to prevent families, families reliance on and or divert them from ongoing cash assistance and guide them towards self-sufficiency and helping them through the preventing presenting crisis. Retention, the benefits and services are provided to allow an employed individual to maintain employment and achieve self-sufficiency and contingency, uh, our benefit services are provided to meet an emergent need that threatens the health or well-being of one or more family members, and it and it goes on and talks about things, but um, our job and family services, um, does a wonderful job in Knox County. They do have the definitions as to how they go about doing that. Um, we do have a levy coming up for just the children's portion and it won't be this year, but next year. And so we want, we need to let people know in the county that what a wonderful job they do. Um, and and it's one that I think people would approve the approach that they do that, and so uh, we're going to be approving that, um, uh, Prevention, Retention and Continuancy Plan as commissioners, so if you want to put anything else in there.
Motion to approve.
I second.
Those favor say aye.
And that requires one signature. And the, we've got a few minutes, so I'll just do a couple updates for sake of time, just a reminder, public hearing tonight at six o'clock, open on plan.
Yes.
Is she ready? I guess I'll pause and let.
No, we'll be back soon, yes.
Come back, yeah.
Get a coin.
It's here, it's in the chapel, grab a coin.
Did you get it, Penny?
No.
Oh.
Got it. So what we will be doing, um, is that we will be presenting the Knox County nine-one-one dispatcher of the year award. Uh, they're out in the the hall celebrating, I think, at this time, and so when they come in, we will do that presentation and then following that, we'll do a presentation that, um, the nine-one-one proclamation for National Public Safety Telecommunicator Week, so, yes, we're ready for you, yes.
Aye.
You brought the small.
Whoa, yeah.
Brought the load.
Yeah.
So now we know why he's the dispatcher.
Right, right. This is Chase Bell. The Chase.
Barry Lester, nice ring. Chase, you're so tall, you're not even getting on the screen.
Yeah, you wanna sit down, Chase, so please have a face shot of you now.
There we go. Uh, Chase has been with the agency, it'll be five years in October, correct, Chase? Yes, and, uh, besides his dispatcher of the year this year, he was our overtime rock star, meaning he had the most overtime. He had the attendance award, he missed the least amount of work and a lifesaver award, meaning he provided life-saving CPR instructions.
Very good job. Top of all that, he was part of the union's collective bargaining team that Gordon and I worked with and he moved through your contract for the dispatcher, so he's he's a busy guy.
Yeah, so can you tell the uh, the Knox County community a little bit about yourself, where you hail from?
Myself, yeah, um, I'm from Knox County. I was um, I grew up in Frederic Town for a while, then we moved to Johnstown, that's where I graduated, that's where I'm from, um, then we came back.
Well, glad you glad you saw the light and that this is the place to be. Chase, Chase, we appreciate all that you do for the county and and so we want to recognize you and honor you for being the dispatcher um, forever here at Knox County. We have, um, this is our cryptocurrency that we have that doesn't have any monetary value, but it, uh, it's one that we only give out on a special occasions and and that is such as this and so, uh, our resolution that we passed, um, simply says acknowledge Chase Bell as the Knox County nine-one-one dispatcher of the year for two thousand twenty-four. Uh, during the CACI, uh, moved the adoption of the following resolution and the resolution talks uh, several things, but one of the key things in there, I think, this talks about Chase Bell has consistently gone above and beyond the call of duty, handling emergency calls with calmness, efficiency and compassion and making significant contributions to the overall effectiveness of entered emergency response efforts in Knox County. And then, um, down at the bottom says Barry Lester seconded and we all affirmed it, and so we would like to present this uh, proclamation to you, Chase, and we would like to have your your picture taken. Uh, we may have to have you get on your knees, so the rest of us will be at the same height, uh, but we congratulations for that and and so we would like to have Andrew and we'll have you come around the table and we'll move sortings out of the way. Oh, we could do that. We're gonna be in front of the flag, so. Um, on the other side, I think, on the other side, yeah, 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 we wanna have, can you get us in, Andrew?
I can get you guys all in here.
Or you can use that wide angle lens, is that what you're gonna say?
We'll be quite centered, but we should be okay.
Okay, do you need us to move?
Um, actually, yeah, if you wanna center, if everybody could just take a step that way, yeah, there you go. And we. Just a little bit more that way. There we go, that's better, all right.
And everyone says pizza.
No, no. Three, two, one. Do one more.
Let's say Chase, one, two, three, Chase. Miss fire.
I was gonna say, this is like.
You gotta take the lens cap off and.
It's not, uh.
You want dangerous.
I was gonna say, yeah, I'm gonna have to use Andrew's.
I'll give you mine.
It's Taco Tuesday down there today.
Yeah.
I feel like I should be like. Yep, no, I get to use Andrew's.
Okay, yeah.
Well, Chase, that's well deserved.
Congratulations, Chris.
Talk someone on.
Yeah, it was, um, I forgot about the call actually, I had to look it up today because I. Yeah, I looked it up, it was somebody had, uh, yeah, uh, recent, wait, can I say? Uh, yeah, this is on, yeah, so. He had had recent heart issues or something and I think he went into cardiac arrest and so he talked them to go over the phone, how to do CPR and ended up surviving, so.
I think we have seven lifesaver awards this year.
We're like, yeah.
Yeah.
Not good.
Too bad, but.
Thank you, Chase, thank you. And then, um.
Uh, once we're done here, we'll, I'll bring him down to the center, you know, about fifteen minutes or so, I think.
So do we have to wait to ten forty for the nine-one-one proclamation?
No, because you're actually gonna sign that, we're gonna take it downstairs.
Okay.
You already signed it.
Well, that's what I wondered about that, yeah, good, good deal.
You guys already signed that last week.
Yeah. So Jason, you were talking about the six o'clock meeting tonight.
Here in the chapel conference room, so you're good there. Um, the north entry project is progressing well, the concrete is all forward, uh, it's curing and they'll be back at the twenty-first, the steel is still still scheduled to be delivered and and hopefully start to install at that point, so. Um, everything's on track and going well, so we'll get you up there and take a look at that. The, I wanted to just touch base a little bit on transit, um, I know Cheryl put a story out there for us about that, uh. I did reach out and talk to ODOT on your behalf and, uh, there are some options available, as I think we have a lot to consider and think about. There is, we could potentially ask to amend the grant and focus just strictly on a maintenance facility with an eighty-twenty match to that grant. Um, so we we're gonna need to, would need to break out what we think the cost differential between the total project and the maintenance facility would be. So that's one option. We have around a month to make that decision. There's no urgency because it it's kind of in a holding pattern with FTA anyway, so uh, we got plenty of time to make that decision, don't need to make it today. And, um, obviously, you know, we're looking at multiple options. I think there were some comments to Cheryl's story about, you know, we should go to Hartland Park, well, rest assured the public, we we are looking at that as an option and that's probably our preferred option as a county is since the maintenance facility may still go down to Hartland Park, but we own land there as well, or the county decides to do that in the future, so obviously putting the operations of the administrative side somewhere in that area would would certainly be my preference and my recommendation to you, but you know, we're doing due diligence and I'm I'm looking at that, making some decisions and trying to see what what's available so I can come back to you with good options that you can consider, um, for you to go look at and then and then ultimately the commissioners make a decision on that, so. Trying to just backfind at this point and give you good information and lets you make a decision from that information, so we are looking at that. Rest assured, so, one of several things we're kicking around, trying to figure out exactly what what are our options, so. Uh, we wanted, I wanted to point that out, so certainly be more information to come in the next month on that. And I think beyond that, commissioners, I don't have any other items for you today.
And, yeah, basically.
I just, we're interviewing. Uh, just we're interviewing at the A D F for a person to replace Jeff Cottkey's position and we appreciate his service to the community.
Going back to our last meeting, uh, I attended the uh, mobility management meeting, um. Ms. Blaine was there. What was there, twenty people there, Cheryl? Paul Park, morning. Uh, looking at some of the ways that we may uh, change some of our mobility and transportation efforts. In the county by joining forces with. Uh, several people. Also yesterday, uh, we addressed the cooners, which I thought was a very nice outing for us and uh. So, other than that, I don't have much.
And I think commissioners received, I think you received the thing from A E P yesterday about uh. You know, it's, there's been a discussion or I shouldn't say it's more in the discussion, uh, talking about um, our. Electric bills going up in in June, um, A E P sent out uh. Uh, comment information thing to the county commissioners and I don't know, did you get it to Cheryl? Well, I don't know if we're able to give it to you, but yeah, yeah. Uh, it it talks about, you know, we're the uh, about generation services and. Um, and then also transmission services says. The generation services, which is what we've been hearing about, about that price increase. Um, and it talks about, yeah, if you have the option now in the, in the uh, townships. To be able to pick who you have as that provider. Um, so. That the, yeah, I think the short version is that uh, um, many people are going to see a twenty-seven dollar. Per month increase um, on that uh, generation service and that's per, um, I think one thousand. Um. Meg, not megawatts, uh, watts and it had it in here someplace and I didn't highlight it. Oh, it was one thousand kilowatts. Um, and then there's also a transmission service decrease of nine dollars. So. There's gonna be about an eighteen dollar differential there. And that's again based on. If a typical residential customer uses one thousand kilowatts um, per month, um. That's where that bill will be. Um, and and so because of those increases, it's it's possible that we as commissioners need to talk about. Uh, trying to do the aggregate approach um, for our residents in the township. Commissioners previously put it on twice and it got floored both times. Um, but if the uh, electric bills continue to go up, then maybe it's time to approach that again. City of Mount Vernon does it, uh, the aggregate approach. Uh, Villages of Fredericktown does it. I don't know if Sundberg does, do you know? Yeah, but those, those two entities I know do it and and uh, the residents of Fredericktown. And the city of Melbourne have received a benefit from that and. Yeah, they, they aggregate the, it's um, you you you, you know, bulk, bulk buying purchase. Right now, every individual in the township, they buy on their own. Um, on the aggregate, it means all that, but those electric bills are put together. And so you spread that cost out and so it lowers everyone's bill because of that. And that's the function of.
Guaranteed of. Amount of electric and and so the city does that and.
Better.
Right, but like Commissioner Perswell said, we have tried this twice. You have to do a gas and electric and it. Has not gone over well in the county. It seems the voters said they weren't interested.
They don't want the government to have any say on it.
Even though they do indirectly.
We could show them the cost savings and it would make it more.
Well, we've, yeah, we tried to, we tried to do that and yeah.
And really, it just went on as a option. I mean, the county doesn't benefit in any way. It was just that, but it has to.
So this is a ballot issue?
Yes, it is. Yes, it is.
And so the city of Melbourne has that. And then if you live in the city, you can opt out of the aggregate program. Um, if you so choose. But it's basically all the city residents that are in the aggregate program, their usage, they're going to the company and buying and saying this is. The amount of electric we're gonna need. So it it gets a better price than you doing it on your own. Sometimes the cut, the individual. User can get a better price for a short time, but the aggregate program kind of hit lots even and then they manage that.
Yeah.
It's what we do at the county. So Palmer Energy here at the county level, all of our county locations. Of all of our buildings and Jeff's Water, Wastewater, the Sheriff's Office, we, we're all, we buy in bulk under an aggregate. Through C C A O, Palmer's part of that. And so they're taking all of our electric uses that we use as a county government entity throughout the entire county, all of our locations. And we're saying this is how much electric we need and then give us a better price. We save substantial amount of money.
What you do is tell them your estimated use of the.
Bills, right? They, yeah, they pull your bill. So like Jeff was just talking today, for example. All these generators he's put out in the field. Those are not on our aggregate right now. So I just sent those off this morning to say, hey, we want to add all of these locations to our aggregate program. To, to get that better price for gas.
And and it's, it affects basically the aggregate, that basically affects the A E P people. If you're on, I always call it the L R E, the Lincoln Row, but it's not called that, the Energy Co-op, I think it is now. It doesn't impact those customers. Because they're already in buying them. It's those that are not.
And that was part of our problem in the county was we have a fair amount of. Co-ops and so to, to those consumers. To vote yes or no, it doesn't impact them either way. Because they're already getting a better price by being a co-op, just like Ohio, uh, coming in gas. They're not, those customers aren't affected. So that was part of what Palmer Energy, when they were putting this on the ballot, this felt like. We were fighting a little bit of an uphill battle because of the number of co-ops. Customers that we have counting. So you gotta kind of educate them to either. You know, doesn't affect them, they don't vote or. You know, do they vote yes? So other people that aren't in a co-op can get a better price, like they're getting a better price. It's kind of gets a little bit different.
Did I understand you say that you had to do electric and gas?
You could do either. We put both on the ballot. And they both lost by different numbers, which is kind of interesting too, because it seems like if you'd be in favor of one. You'd be in favor of the other, but they, they vote, they lost by. Different numbers.
Yeah.
This is collapse, so you will get better prices than we're able to get. Has it even?
Because they're buying. Yeah.
But A E P won't do that for us.
Take the law didn't allow.
Yeah.
To do that.
Yeah, that's why I think, yeah, they have. You know, as a customer, you can pick those sometimes, say, well, I want a lower price for twelve months or eighteen months.
And we can't pick what they're choosing since they're getting a better price.
So they're really, I, I mean, I guess obviously the the voters felt like there was downside. And they voted it down like said, then we put it out. When the, when the electric and gas rates went up, we put it on the ballot again and. I don't think it lost its bad, but it still lost pretty substantially. And so I think at that point it was like. No, it's.
Think it's kind of funny. They don't want the government involved, yet the government is involved from the start of all the. The uh, power.
We felt like just the commissioners' office was, we, we were just putting on there as an opportunity. To let people save money because residents of the city of Melbourne are saving money on that. Um, I think when I moved into the city, my bill went down around twenty dollars a month by signing up for the aggregate electric program. So. I think there is savings there, but.
Okay, if there's uh, nothing else, we're gonna go down to the nine one one area. So I'll take a motion for adjournment.
I motion to adjourn.
I second it.
Stand adjourn, thank you.